I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Diney.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahman.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 51, 2019, amending the Code of Ethics of the Administrative Code of the City of Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. As our city clerk mentioned, this hearing, our 5:30 hearing, is just specifically to discuss this one piece of legislation. So if there's... We do have a few people signed in to discuss. Anyone who wishes to discuss general city issues or other items will have an opportunity to discuss them at our 6 o'clock meeting, which will be gavelled in right after this one. So our first speaker on this hearing is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, City Resident and Taxpayer. Again, I want to compliment Councilmen Gahn and the rest of City Council for undertaking this project. Obviously, it's long overdue and much needed. I will preface my remarks again by what I said last week. Number one, not to be flippant, but I do think you ought to provide a copy of this draft to the school district and to Warren Betty at the prison and to the county commissioners. Do you realize that Scranton and Lackawanna County, three taxing bodies, the school district, the city, the county, and all three of them are under investigation? The county and the school district by the state police and the state attorney general and now the city by the FBI. So if ever an ethics code was needed, it's needed here. The second thing is I seriously hope you will consider recommending to the administration the establishment of a whistleblower hotline. There is one at the county level. You talked to Controller Gary DeBilio. It's saved the county a good deal of money. It's resulted in prosecution. I remember one year, I forget which year, it's 2016, I believe, 13 cases were forwarded to the district attorney. So it may be useful for the city of Scranton. With that said, just a few minor things. On page 90, paragraph four, in bold, it'll say "recommendation to the mayor." I think a word got dropped out in the print. If you read it, the first sentence doesn't make sense. So you want to take a look at page 90, paragraph four. Also, page 95, paragraph four, the word "determined" is misspelled. And page 97, section 12, paragraph 1A2, there's a parenthesis that is missing, which makes the paragraph a little bit illegible. And that's about it. I think that you should get this code adopted as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Sheridan.
Good evening, Mr. Rogan and other councilmen. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for updating the ethics code. I was thrilled to see the news coverage on this, and I really appreciate your initiative. I have only skimmed the... Excuse me, I'm a little nervous speaking, but I've only skimmed the document itself, but it looks very impressive to me. I think you've addressed a lot of very important matters in it. I have not closely reviewed it yet, though. But I did notice one thing that I have a question about, and that is with regard to the composition of the board and the selection of board members. I was wondering how the board members would be appointed and whether there would be a public solicitation or if applications would be possibly sought from the public. And the reason I ask is because I'm interested in being considered for the ethics board if you were going to reach out to members of the public. My work as an audit manager might serve well. I've done a lot of work and I'm very familiar with the Pennsylvania Public Employees... Public Officials and Employees Ethics Act myself. So... In relation to the audits that I've worked on. So that was just the question that I had. And again, I'm really grateful to you for updating the code, for reforming the board, and I look forward to seeing the continued work in this area. I really believe that improved transparency and controls over campaign finance, such as what you have spelled out in the code, is very important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on that point, I know when the Human Relations Board was reconstituted, that was put out to the public, and I think that was a good way of getting applications to come in. So we'll certainly take that recommendation under advisement.
Jay Walsh, I'm sorry, John Walsh.
Good evening. Ethics are good. Laws are even better. Okay? There's an issue with the mayor and the permit office concerning laws, and there's... When you passed that budget last month with the garbage tax...
Mr. Walsh, if you could please keep your comments specifically to the ethics legislation. If you want to talk about general issues, there'll be an opportunity during the regular meeting.
This is real ethics, okay? You illegally passed. You want to call you broke the ethics or you broke the law, but you passed the garbage bill last month.
Mr. Walsh, this hearing is not regarding the garbage bill.
No, it's regarding ethics.
Correct. It's regarding a specific ethics proposal that council is considering.
I'm calling your ethics into question, Mr. Rogan.
Mr. Walsh, do you have a comment regarding the legislation that council is voting on tonight?
Yeah, well, it's way overdue.
Okay, please comment on that legislation. If you want to talk about any other issue, you have that opportunity at our 6 o'clock meeting.
I think they're co-mingled. No doubt about it. Okay? You're basically stepping up to the plate now about ethics. And I pointed out a number of times where you broke the law, which is beyond ethics. Don't you get it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address item 6A specifically? Mr. Walsh?
Evening, Council. Bob Ball with Scranton. You know, what you're putting into place is a very serious set of regulations. And you have to remember, you live by the sword, you die by the sword. Accountability is going to be first and foremost now, once this is passed. And it speaks to council? Does it speak to the mayor? Does it speak to the Scranton School Board? Does this cover all bodies? Or is it specifically to city council?
This is specific to city... All city employees, city of Scranton.
Does that include the Scranton School District?
It does not.
Okay. The issue I have with that is that you have seen what's happened with the school board, why we need, before we implement this, to include all parties within the city of Scranton. All governing parties. That's the school board, so with the commissioners, as well as our own city. We have to have this as a blanket coverage. So I think we need to discuss it before you pass this with the other governing bodies, that they all participate in one set of rules. Basically, one bible, so to speak. And then, and only then, are we going to get the credibility issues resolved within this city. We can't just bind city council and let the elders run rampant. So what you do here tonight affects all of us within the city of Scranton. And that's all the governing bodies. County, school district, and city council, fire department, police department, DPW, and so on and so forth. We have an issue with zoning here and the enforcement of the permitting and all that goes on. Who is going to take the responsibility or be the policing body of a complaint? Who makes that decision? Who's going to be the judge and jury regarding the ethics that are violated, whether it's on this side of the electorate or on that side? Those are the questions I think we need to answer. We just can't have a random... Said, it's a heck of an idea to have. It's a great governing tool that you're doing, but you got to put a bite in it. You know, just putting it on paper and not have the proper methodology to enforce it, it's a waste of time and energy. But that's why we need to include all bodies. And I think tonight you should table it, have a public meeting with all the other bodies, and let's have one bible, once and for all in this city. And maybe then and only then, the city's going to move forward in the proper direction. Because accountability is among everyone, not just the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Is there anyone else who would like to address item 6A?
Dave Ferrantis, Scranton. I understand you can't answer any questions here at a hearing, but I'm going to put this out there. I'd like to know, I mean, I want this to be addressed, like Mr. Bowles said. In the past, this council has never followed any laws. Any laws that come ahead of them that were broken, you've never done anything about. So I'd like to know how you're going to address this. How are you going to follow laws that you're making in this ethics code if you never followed them before? I mean, we have no trust in you at all. Mr. Bolzoni is here illegally, and you don't care. I mean, there's so many laws that you break, but you don't care. So your ethics laws have to be enforced. I'm just wondering, are you going to enforce them? Because you have never enforced any other law in the city. So that's very important. So unless you can enforce them, don't do it. But make sure you do do it. If you're going to do it, follow them and enforce every law and go after anybody that breaks them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address item 6A?
I'm not going to criticize anybody directly, but I'd like to see if we can reintroduce the two-party system here. Run under the general election, one party only.
Mr. Dobson, this is, again, just regarding the ethics legislation.
Yeah, I'd like to see it adopted in the ethics. If it's not possible, fine. You know, that's okay. But in other words, if you win both parties, you should abdicate and go with the party you agree with most. If I didn't agree with two-thirds of my party, I wouldn't be in it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Catch you later.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss item 6A?
Yes, I'm going to jump around a little bit because I want to make sure I get in what's most important to me. Section 12, on the individual gifts. I take umbrage at you telling me how much of my money I can spend and how I can spend it. Especially when in B, you sort of favor those if people want to spend, they can spend as much of their own money as they want. But a candidate can't accept more than $2,700 from me. I mean, not that I would probably do that for any city council candidate or, you know, but... But, I mean, I worked a long time. I worked long hours. I made money. I was budgeted. Now that I have discretionary income, I think it should be me who decides that, not you people telling me how much of my money I can spend. So that is the thing that I most dislike. I think back in section 2A1, is the council vote by vote or by appointment?
The two members, you mean?
Yes.
By appointment. By... Among ourselves, I think is how we're going to handle it.
I'm sorry?
Well, we'll decide who the two are. The two members...
Well, yeah, no. But are you going to do it out here? Is it going to be out here?
Yes.
And are you going to take turns nominating somebody as you do with the others?
No, no, I don't think so.
No. The way that I envision it working is that the public, we will solicit people to be on the board, and then we, as a council, will make a decision, but it will come by vote at a public meeting.
As a group.
Right.
And D, in that same section, I think it... That where you talk about recent orders of the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County, I think that's too vague, and that ruling or whatever it was should be specified either by number or included, because this is going to last a while. And I think that, you know, recent is relative, and I think it should be specifically referenced.
What section are you talking about?
Section 2.
2D. No, section 2D.
Subsection D?
No. Yeah, within section 2, yes.
Preservation.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then AA of the gift section, how do you evaluate social benefit?
How would you define social benefit?
I don't know. That's what I'm...
I don't know.
I'm sort of asking you that. It's in here.
Okay.
It's in here, and it talks about social benefit, and I wouldn't know how to evaluate that if I...
Yeah. I would defer that to Solicitor Menor. I'm not really sure how you would define social benefit.
And then section 4, or it might be 5, I sort of lost track, but it was E. Whose responsibility is it to make employees or officers familiar with the types of fraud and the potential, et cetera? You know? You know what it says.
Yeah.
Whose job? It doesn't say whose job that is.
That would be the commission, because it's all part of the education process, and we're going to try to do our best to fully fund that, to make sure education happens with all the employees of the city of Scranton. So it would be the commission itself that would be responsible, but there'll be workshops, seminars.
So they're going to... Will employees and officials have to attend?
I would recommend that they would. Yes.
Well, shouldn't that be in there?
There is a part in here about that, someplace, about education.
Okay. And there are a lot of people and a lot of work for this commission, hire a solicitor, which is pretty typical. They're going to conduct investigations, they're going to have to hire somebody for that. What are you planning to budget for the... For this effort?
Well, it would... My understanding in talking to Mr. Bolzoni is that it would probably come out of professional services, but it's hard to budget for this because it's the first time that we're ever doing it. So we don't have a specific number.
Okay. And that brings up something else, because it says it's an amendment, but it really isn't an amendment. Because when there's an amendment, you usually have the... Legislatively, you usually have the current document, and then you X out what there was and what you're putting in, so you can compare the two. So my five minutes are up again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to discuss item 6A?
Evening, gentlemen. I did not come here to talk about this piece of legislation, but here's an observation.
Mr. Foley, if you want to talk about general issues, we'll have that in the regular portion of the meeting.
No, no. I'm talking about your program now.
Okay. And that's what this here is for.
My experience is having somebody independent, responsible as chairman. I would encourage you to consider, even if you have to pay the individual, of appointing somebody from the University of Scranton in the philosophy department that's responsible for the ethics program, or somebody in the finance area that is responsible for business ethics and make them chairman. That way, I think you can assure yourself there'll be some independence.
Thank you.
Yes, council, we already have a strong enough position that you can fire the mayor. How much stronger do you need than that? And if I remember, the very first thing that the mayor did was step all over the people of this city and that law by disregarding it and firing... I mean, hiring Mr. Bolzoni.
Mr. Elman, we're only speaking specifically on the ethics legislation at this time. If you want to talk about general city issues, we're going to have that meeting in about 10 minutes.
What do I not understand that we could... That council can hire and fire someone?
Council does not have the ability to hire and fire.
All right. You win this time. And your 5 o'clock shadow is terrible. I tell you. Yes, I saw it last night on TV.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Anyone else specifically regarding the new Ethics Act? If not, this hearing is adjourned. We will reconvene in about seven minutes for our regularly scheduled meeting. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community, especially the Honorable James P. Kennedy, who served more than three decades as Magisterial District Judge in Lackawanna County. May we keep him and his family in our prayers during this difficult time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Diney.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahman.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, breakdown of eligible salaries for the liquid fuels account for the months of October, November, and December 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, tax assessors' report for hearing date to be held January 16, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, minutes of the Lackawanna County Land Bank meeting, held December 14, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, held January 9, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements to make at this time?
Yes, I have one. Just wanted to announce again that on January 26th at Montage Mountain, there will be the Polar Plunge, the Friends of Shannon McDonough splashing with compassion. This event is free to attend. $35 donation to plunge. You can register between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. The plunge is taking place between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. If you sign up to plunge by January 19th, you can receive a free hoodet sweatshirt. For more information, you can visit www.FriendsOfShannonMcDonough.com. And all proceeds benefit young individuals battling cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a few. Next Monday, in observance of Martin Luther King Day, City Hall will be closed. Council's next regularly scheduled meeting is January 28th. DPW is also off in observance of the holiday. Refuse and Red Recycling will be one day behind next week. DPW will continue to pick up Christmas trees throughout the month of January. Residents may place their tree at the curb, and DPW's tree crew will be going into the neighborhood to chip the streets on sight. Also, an executive session was held this evening prior to the meeting regarding a personnel matter. Prior to citizens' participation, one quick comment I'd like to make. I see we have a packed house here tonight. I think it goes without saying, we know why everyone is here. It's discussed much of what's been in the media. And I understand a lot of you may be here looking for answers from council. Council has learned everything we have through the media as the public has. I understand there are residents that want to discuss this issue, may want to vent, may want to discuss it, and that's certainly your right to do so. We would just please ask anyone to avoid spreading rumor or any info that hasn't been substantiated as fact in the media as of yet. We did also discuss with our attorney previously to the meeting if there was any action that council could take regarding finding more information on the current matter. So I'd like to turn it over to our Solicitor, Attorney Menor.
As I mentioned, apparently, although we don't even know if this to be true, but apparently there's some type of investigation going on, and it's, as most investigations are confidential. Our course of action ought to be to write a letter and try and get some information from the investigative bodies, and hopefully we'll get some response that will help us in moving the city issues forward, or at least not slowing them down. Beyond that, we're not an investigative body, and we have no right to do that. So I'm not sure there's much more we can do beyond that until we get some response.
Thank you, Attorney Menor. And I do want to mention, as I do most every Monday morning, is I meet with the mayor and the city solicitor. Just to go over legislation, general city operations, that meeting did take place this morning as normal. We did not discuss any of these ongoing matters, but we did discuss city business, and the mayor did relate to me that if there was anything as far as problems with the city or any operations, everything would continue as normal and council would be kept in the loop. Our first speaker for citizens' participation, and I apologize if I get your name wrong, it looks like Florina Ross Pigliosi? I apologize.
Hello, my name is Flori Elena Ross Pigliosi. I am a citizen of Scranton, and I am a taxpayer. 11 years ago, I applied for a handicap sign to be put in front of my house for health issues. October, the end of October, I came home from a doctor's office, a visit, and my sign was removed. Right away, I thought that somebody stole my sign. I went to the police and I told them to report that somebody stole my sign. But I was learned then that new ordinance have come up that you have to pay $10 and you have to register your sign every year. I was not aware of that. When I applied for the handicap sign, I was not only given a handicap sign in front of my house to park in front, I also given the license plate, the driver's license, everything. Everything is here. When I went to, you know, when I learned about the ordinance, I went to pay my $10, and I opened my wallet, and the lady says, "No, you have to have a check." I ran home, wrote my checkbook, signed a check. She says, "No, you have to apply it again." I said, "Okay." I went home, I got, you know, another application, I signed it, brought it back with my $10... I went home, I got, you know, another application, I signed it, brought it back with my $10. She says, "Oh, no, where do you live?" I said, "In East Mountain." She goes, "Well, no, you have to talk to Corporate Mitchell." So I said, "Okay, may I speak to Corporate Mitchell?" She goes, "Uh, no, you have to call him on the phone." I called him four times, leaving messages. He never returned my call. The fifth time, he finally returned my call, and I explained to him why I needed this handicap sign. And I said, "Well, I have fibromyalgia, I have rheumatoid arthritis, I have Lyme disease, I have lymphedema, and I have lumps underneath my feet." And I said, "I know, I like to think that I look younger, but I am going to be 69 years old in two days." He's responded to me with, "No, what you want is to park like a queen in front of your house." And I said, "No, Mr. Mitchell, that is not true. I never received a letter telling me that my sign was going to be taken out. I checked with people that had signs before, nobody received a letter, the sign was just removed." My neighbor on the right side, they have, it's a rooming house, or whatever it is, many cars they have, most of the cars that they have, they're SUVs, which are very large, or they have trucks, because I guess they're in construction or whatever, leaving me no space to park. Yes, I do have a driveway, and that's the reason that he's not accepting it. My driveway, because I'm in East Mountain, is inclined. For me, it's very hard to climb it. Yes, I have steps next to my driveway. That is five steps that I have to go besides climbing my driveway. Besides that, after the five steps, there's another step, that's six steps. Then I have to turn, and there's another three steps, that's eight steps. Well, if I park in the front, there's only three steps that I have to climb. I know that means nothing for people that are healthy. I am not. After 52 years of being very healthy, unfortunately, I got cancer, and it has been downhill from then on. And he doesn't understand that. I've been to so many venues trying to get my plaque back. I'm not saying to the city, "Build me a driveway that I can walk." I'm not saying that. I just want my space for my Toyota to park in front of my cars. That's all I need. Another response that he said was, "Well, you know what? You cannot go anywhere, so just stay home. Stay home all the time." And I said, "Why are you treating me like that? Why are these responses so demeanour? I mean, is it because I'm a woman? Because I'm handicapped? Because I'm old? I don't understand his problem." And he is making the solution for everybody that are handicapped, and I want you to be aware what is going on. It seems like nobody is aware what is going on, that he is making decisions, he's just ripping these signs away without any of our knowledge. I never received a paper, or a phone call, or even a sticky in my door, in my house, to let me know that this was going to happen. I just came in, I hear the sign has gone out where I parked, and the people next door, if they even had the audacity to block my driveway, so now I can't park nowhere.
We do have your name and your address here, but we'll do this.
Yes, and I have all my documentation that what I have, I have everything that I needed to do to have my handicap park. Eleven years I have it, all of a sudden I don't have it because he doesn't want to give it back to me.
If you could please leave a copy of that with our clerk, and we will look into it.
I tried to make copies, my copy machine broke today.
But I promise you, we will look into it.
Please.
There are certain regulations in the city.
I understand.
With driveways, but sometimes it's more common sense than.
And will you also leave a contact phone number, right here?
Yes.
Would you leave a contact phone number, and that way I can get back to you tomorrow?
Thank you.
With some more information after I speak with the police, and see if there's any kind of special exception rule that we can make, or dig in deeper for you.
Yes, I understand that there's, you know, not everybody's healthy.
I'll give you a call tomorrow after I speak with them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. Okay, let's talk about the 800-pound gorilla in the room, Mayor Courtright and the FBI. Now, you may not believe this, but I am not the mayor's biggest fan. In fact, I don't even like the man, but I think he has a constitutional right, like any other citizen, to remain silent on certain matters. Okay? Now, he is the mayor, and I expect him to make himself available to legitimate questions like, was the FBI in City Hall? Where did they go? Certain things of that nature. As to what they were doing in his home, I'm not sure that he has any obligation to answer that, you know. The ball is in the government's court. The FBI has conducted, started this investigation both at City Hall and at the mayor's home. It's their responsibility to apply all necessary resources to bring this investigation to its logical end. If there is evidence of wrongdoing on anyone's part, they should be addressing it to the grand jury, getting indictments, and letting it go through the courts. We're a nation of laws and due process, and that does include the mayor. On the other hand, the next time there's a rumor like he's going to resign, he should immediately, upon learning of that rumor, lay it to rest. He shouldn't have to be chased. I am disappointed that that took as long as it did. Having said that, I have a question for counsel. In the event the mayor was to resign, can you tell me who becomes the next acting mayor? Is it you, Mr. Rogan?
The Home Rule Charter states that council president becomes acting mayor for 30 days until a permanent mayor is selected.
Because I think the people need to know that, because that was one of the reasons why people were chasing him down. Are you resigning? If so, who would become the mayor? What's going to happen to the city? Keep in mind, well, this investigation charges along at a snail's pace, like I'm sure the others have. There's going to be a cloud over the city, and it's going to affect city operations. What are the bankers thinking about the city's credit rating? You know, a whole lot of things. So, you know, pressure's got to be brought to bear on the government to bring this investigation to a conclusion, one way or the other. I have another question. I saw in the paper that the mayor did hire Attorney Paul Walker. Is the mayor paying for Attorney Walker out of his own pocket, or is this going to be paid by taxpayer funds? Now, I ask this because if you remember at the Lackawanna County level, with the investigation into the prison, that's being paid for by the taxpayer. And as of January 9th, the running tab is $691,891 and counting. I don't know, but I would assume that the Scranton School District is also charging the taxpayer for legal fees. So I think we do, the mayor does owe us an answer. Who is paying Attorney Walker? Is he paying him privately? Or is he going to be submitting invoices to the controller's office in his capacity as mayor? If the latter, I will be asking you every week, what is the running tab? Okay, so please, for January 28th, if you could find out that answer. With regard to the Arcadis study, I'm tired of asking for the status, and so what I strongly recommend is that you invite Arcadis Incorporated of Philadelphia to come here, have a public meeting, and give us an update. They were paid, they were bid $124,500 to do this study, which is supposed to take nine months. Minus a $35,000 grant, that means they were paid $89,500 of taxpayer money. I want to know what bang I got for my buck. And I looked at the original RFP, and it's more than just, do we need a stormwater management authority? Had to do with the rate structure, it had to do with resources and activities. They owe us an answer. Thank you.
Joan, I did get a response from Arcadis. I left it at my office, so I'll.
Well, shame on you.
I'll forward that to you over next day or two.
Thank you. Les Spindler.
Evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. What happened to this woman is terrible. I know for a fact that this law is being enforced randomly against different people. She's being picked on. There's a house in my neighborhood, years ago, an elderly couple owned it. They passed away, and it was their handicap sign. After they passed away, a young married couple bought it. They were in their 20s, weren't handicapped. The sign was still there when they sold the house to another woman. It's still there. These people that have had it since the elderly couple passed away aren't handicapped. So that law wasn't enforced against them. That sign is still there, and that's wrong. I'm not going to give the address. I'll give it to you maybe sometime off-camera, but she's being picked on unfairly. It's ridiculous. Okay, moving on. Last month, I pulled up on the side of my house. I own the property from the alley up to the corner. I didn't think I'd be that long, so I was faced the wrong way. A five-minute stay turned into like 45 minutes. I came out, there was a ticket on my car, just for facing the wrong way. That law is ridiculous. What is the purpose of having that law? What harm was I doing facing the wrong way? Yet the kids up by the U can park right on the corner, putting people's lives in danger by blocking people's sight. They don't get sighted. I got a $25 fine, which I paid in change, in nickels, dimes, and quarters, and took it down to the police station. They weren't too happy about that. They're lucky I didn't take pennies now. That law should be taken off the books. There's no purpose to that law, except fleecing more money from the citizens of the city who are overtaxed the way it is. Next thing. This ridiculous rental registration fee, which I brought to council's attention three years ago. I wrote a note to them three years ago saying, "I live there, I'm exempt." Last year, I brought it up again. Council said they would take care of it. Got it back again this year. I sent them a real nasty note. I'm going to give it to you. I don't care if you read it or not.
You are exempt from the law, unfortunately.
They sent it back to me, highlighting that I am exempt, but it says I have to fill out the form anyway. I'm not filling out this form. It's a waste of time, they're wasting postage sending it to everybody that's exempt. It's ridiculous. So if council would take this and give it to Pat Hinton, because if I go up and take it, I'm afraid I'll get let out of there in handcuffs, because he doesn't know what the hell he's doing. And if I get it in the mail next year, it's going to go right in the garbage. I will not fill out a form, which I am exempt from. Last time I was here, I brought up the Dorothy Street problem with the water, going over the curb by the basketball courts, and a neighbor down there brought it to my attention again, and asked if I would come and talk about it again, because now, after the last rain, it got cold, it froze, and now there's ice all over the sidewalk. The curb, the pavement comes too high up on the curb. The curb, a new curb has to be put up, raised up higher, because when it rains, like I said, the water goes right over the curb, and now in the winter, it freezes, and it's like a skating rink. Something's got to be done there. And lastly, I watched a meeting last week, and I heard Mr. Bowles talking about his dinner, how good it was, and I could echo what he said. It's my 16th year that I volunteered, and it's a great thing, and the way he had that place, when I walked in last month for that Christmas dinner, my jaw dropped. The place was beautiful. He had it decorated almost as nice as Neyo Park. And it was busy from open to close. I mean, he knows how many dinners they gave out. I mean, between deliveries and eating in, it was probably like thousands of them. Did a tremendous, everybody did a tremendous job. The way that place looked, I was so impressed. And I've done it 16 years, and my wife even surprised me. She showed up, and she volunteered. She didn't even tell me she was going to do it. And she was as rewarded her first time as I was the first time, and she said she'll be back next year. So I didn't see any of you people there, so hopefully I'll see you next year, because a few people go and volunteer at least for a little while. I'm sure you'll be as rewarded as I was the first time I volunteered. And 16 years later, I'm still doing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay Walsh.
As far as the legal bills are concerned, I think the mayor should be on the hook for his own legal bills, and I think that if any of you people know what's gone down, okay, I suggest you get your own lawyers and get in there and make a plea deal, okay? Because this has been not, this is just not something just happened up. This has been going ongoing for a long time, okay? Matter of fact, I put a complaint in with the FBI concerning that office, okay? Whatever went down beyond that, that's a whole different situation. So, and the city of Scranton taxpayers shouldn't be paying for anybody's legal bills. If they got themselves into this mess, let them pay to get themselves out of this mess, okay? And the FBI is not one to play around with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Bowles.
Evening again, counsel. I think, as for his words there, the dinner was a tremendous success, but it was because of people like him that volunteered their time on Christmas Day. All the volunteers that showed up to help the people, but more importantly, all those that came and enjoyed the dinner. And hopefully next year, it'll be better than it was this year. You know, I don't know where to start with this tonight, because there's a lot going on, but one of the things I want to do is honor Magistrate Kennedy. He was not only a great judge, he was a hell of a friend, and he's going to be missed in his words of wisdom, and the way he dealt with people was straightforward, without any games, and everybody had a fair chance. That's what this Ethics Committee is. You got to put stuff in there that's equal on both sides. Right now, it's more one-sided, because we're, like I said earlier, we're not getting everybody With the mayor, I don't think there should be a rush to judgment on the mayor. There's a lot of rumors, a lot of things going on, whatever it is, it'll come out when it's supposed to come out. But all the people talking and rushing to judgment is just a major distraction. Question I have, though, and I've been here for a long time, and there's been a lot of issues. I know Mr. Gahan has issues with the mayor, other people have had it. I'm going to ask a very straightforward question tonight, and you could answer it or you could ignore it. Has anyone on council, either individually or jointly, have anything to do with what's going on with the mayor and the City Hall right now? And that's as straightforward as I can put it out here, and I think that's where we got to start, right here, because you guys are the head of the city right now.
I think I could speak for us as a group, because we did discuss this prior. The answer is no.
I hope it is that way, because again, if it isn't, it's going to come out in the wash, and that's where your Ethics Commission comes in again. As I said, it's a double-edged sword. You know, you have Mr. Hinton here with the permits, all the nonsense he's pulled. You guys passed the rule that said all containers are now. You guys passed the rule that said all containers are now considered structures within the city of Scranton, yet he's done nothing to enforce anybody other than come to me and challenge me over a container that's at my home, but he hasn't done anything to anybody else. And we sent him numerous pictures, black and white locations and all. That's where your ethics has got to come into play. Because the law is the law, and it's for everyone, including everyone that they want to circumvent. He had no problem driving us crazy, cutting the grass over at the church, even knowing that it was going to be all dug up when they put in the new gas lines, filing a hundred-dollar fine. I think with the investigation going on here, you have to look at everything. You have to look at when Mulligan ran for mayor, the money that's never been accounted for and paid. Those are the things we need to get into the city. And I hope that what this investigation is, we clean all the skeletons and the cobwebs out of here once and for all. And we make everybody accountable for the actions why the city is where it is. And that's from your school board, right on down the line. We can't just keep playing around. You know, when you sit here as many years as I've been in this city and see what went on with the mall, with the taxes, yet it's never been brought up by council to go to the school district to say, "We need to reassess that for fairness," yet you had no problems being, remaining quiet on the church I paid thirty-five thousand for, and I owe fifty thousand in taxes, because I wouldn't sell it to a judge, a district judge in the city, who wanted it back and already had a deed cut, but was waiting until the church got torn down to submit his deed. He was just too late, because I beat him to the courthouse, but used his influence to get an assessment of almost a half a million dollars on the property, when the city was buying it for a dollar. That's where your ethics has got to come into play. That's accountability. That's why I asked you to table it tonight and include everybody within this city, the county and the school district. Because then you're going to make everybody accountable. Because right now, your ethics doesn't involve the county. So, they could go do what they did. They could play the games with assessments and get away with it. That's the bottom line. And the last thing I'd like to bring up is, I was fortunate to speak at a Republican meeting in Montgomery County the other night, and it was warm to see how much they want to participate with us up here out of the Scranton area, because who we are and what we stand for. But one thing I'm going to ask, and I'll finish up, is that we support our president in building a wall, that we support the safety of every American in this country from illegal immigrants. I don't want to see anybody in my family, your family, or anyone else's murdered, raped, or anything else, because we didn't do our duty, and that's support our president. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Going back to last year, I think it's been for six years, six years now. I think I remember bringing it up under the Janet Evans Council, that we shouldn't delay collection of paper for recycling for leaves. I can take care of the cans and bottles. I can put them out in the yard, they're not going to melt. And, you know, right through Christmas, they're sitting around the house. And it's, please, next year, try and get it organized that I don't have to have a box full of papers through Thanksgiving or Christmas. Also, last year, the last meeting, we're having too few meetings here. We switched to a summer schedule. We take a big summer vacation. Every Monday is off, but that's a holiday. It's kind of much. So, see if you can do something about it. I'll probably bring it up again. A mention was made on two consecutive meetings about tobacco products, that they shouldn't be sold within a thousand feet of a school. You realize how many people will it impact as far as their business? And how many people will need a car if they want a tobacco product? The businesses will lose patronage. And further, I'm about the right to and not freedom from. That's what my concern is. I still have a little libertarianism in me. I decided a long time ago that some of their ideas wouldn't work and would never work. But as far as less intrusive government and bigger government, it seems like for the average citizen, the government has its nose in your business all the further. And the, when it comes to the big guys, the right to pollute or whatever, it's liberties, civil liberties. It's really a shame that it's getting that way. And furthermore, it seems that every time, the first incident on cigarette smoking was a tax increase. That was cigarette smoking in bars. And by the way, I switched to vape. I don't smoke anymore, but that was called an epidemic. And the second was, the time that person appeared, was sale of city assets. And last time, it was the budget, and we're about to go on vacation for the whole month of December, basically, and past January. So, it's time that we stop worrying about what the average Joe is doing, and I don't need a bunch of kids to tell me how to behave. I don't bother anybody. I don't, I try not to harass anybody. I don't throw my size around. I'm kind of messed up to begin with. That wouldn't be wise. But I don't rob old ladies, and, you know, I don't want to be treated like a jerk all the time. I don't want that tap on my shoulder from Mr. Attarity. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Well, you know that I like to have facts. I'm not going to comment on the mayor's situation. I think it would, from the very beginning, this administration was problematic with his hiring of Bazzoni and Amosa instead of some qualified people. They were hired out of friendship, it appears. Last week, I noticed we lost the income from, the taxable income from the AAA. You know, how many pieces of property does it take to make up for that? Like Scott's store, what was it, a three or four-story building in Mulberry that was gone? The parking lot? The university's taken over a hundred and fifty properties. And then we got downtown been taken over by Lackawanna College. We've lost five hundred and sixty-six houses to foreclosure, and there's hundreds of them are friends of the mayor's and supporters of the mayor's. They had signs in the yard all over, houses that hadn't had taxes paid, like across the street. He not only doesn't pay taxes for five, six years, Jefferson gets two and a half billion dollars of tax money to build properties up that he's going to get the rents for. This is senseless. You know where all this is going, people? This is the result for many of you out there this year and next year. I've talked to people here and there, usually at the grocery store, that their backs against the wall. They're thrilled. You know, I'm an advocate of this reverse mortgage. I've been in my house with it ten, twelve years. I don't even know. I wasn't expecting to live so long, really, but if, as long as I keep going and paying my taxes, they're stuck with me. Pretty soon, I probably, I probably owe more now than my house is worth, because I've taken, I've used up the equity in it, too. The tax base, you people just, just don't comprehend how bad it is to lose your property because of blight and whatever reason, whatever reason, losing your job and all. But last week, I talked to someone that was moving. They asked me if I wanted an air conditioner they had. I said, "No, I don't, I don't need one." They didn't, they were moving in their car. They've lost a duplex. It is just so heartbreaking for me. I wish I could do something for people like that. I wish I could win the lottery and help pay taxes or something. But the fact is, next year, some people watching right now, their name's going to be on here for whatever reasons. And who cares? Yeah, the mayor doesn't care. Bazzoni doesn't care. All they seem to have their attention is downtown. Durkin sure doesn't care. All these people, they don't even live here and pay taxes. Why should they care what happens to us? Downtown, it's just become unacceptable, all the money downtown. Before Christmas, Rosie and me went to Bosco's, and I got in that line trying to get out. This is the worst system in the whole world. How could, a fourth grader could come up with something better than they have there. I won't go back downtown to Bosco's for any reason whatsoever, unless they fix that. And I'm closer to the other mall, anyway. But I thank you for letting me get this off my chest.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Like always.
John Foley?
Gentlemen, thank you for your service. A number of years ago, I had a dispute with the city over a zoning issue, which prompted me to, among other things, embark on a financial analysis and operational review of city activities. That caused me to, among other things, interview a number of people, current, former city employees, contractors, and others. During the course of that, a few, but not all, people mentioned a number of things which I believed to be were illegal acts. At each juncture, I told the individuals that I was not helped, would not be able to help them, that they needed to contact the appropriate authorities. And I always recommended they contact the FBI. I met with you folks on a number of occasions. I reviewed some, but not all of the analysis that I did. And those analyses ran from a whole gamut of things. Campaign contributions, expenditures to vendors, oh yeah, absentee ballots. I ran analysis, again, some you received. But I will tell you, my presentations to you were not just meant for you. Really, they were meant to educate the people, not only in this room, but the people who watched on television, city residents, taxpayers, and others. Last week, there was a game changer. I believe it will be for the good. I believe that it is important right now that every city employee, every single retired employee, every single council member, every single vendor that is aware of an illegal act, either by the administration, by council, by a vendor, that they contact the FBI. They use the main number, ask for an agent, and provide all of the information. Please do not overload the FBI with innuendos, things you think are wrong. But the people who know what happened and know what the illegal acts are, do the right thing. Contact the authorities. Give it to them. With that, gentlemen, I'm going to have dinner with my wife. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Bill Jackowitz?
Good evening, City Council. It's been a long time, about a year and a half since I've been here. I've been waiting about fifteen years for the FBI to finally get here, and they finally did get here. So, I hope that they're, if they're here now, I hope they do a very thorough investigation, like I know they will, because their reputation is that they do a good investigation. As far as the search warrants go, a judge would not have signed and issued a search warrant for the search of the officer, for the search of the house, unless he had damn good probable cause to do so. So, like I said, I'm hoping that they do a very thorough investigation, that they check into everything, not just one item or not just one area, but check in, check in to as numerous, as many areas as they can possibly check into, because there's a lot to be found. And like I said, it took them a long time to get here, but they finally got here. And I just hope that they do a good job. And I'm not going to speculate on anything, because that's all it is, is speculation at this time. I would recommend to the mayor, though, that if he is guilty of anything, he should come forward as soon as he can and let the people, let his people, the citizens of Scranton, know what's going on, so that the city can move on and not be stuck in quicksand because of his problems. So, I hope for the mayor, mayor, if you're listening, you know, if you have something to say, say it. Get it out in the open. Get it out as soon as possible, so that this all can possibly go away as quickly as possible. Now, as far as ethics go, ethics rules and laws are only as good as the enforcement. You can have all the laws you want, you can have all the rules you want, but if nobody enforces them and no one does anything about them, it's just a waste of paper and a waste of time. So, I hope with this new ethic policy that you're getting ready to implement, I hope that you follow through with it, and I hope you do the right thing and put the right people in place, not the good old brother-brother deal, you know, where you get your cousin in there, your uncle and your nephew, and so on and so forth. You know, when you, when you establish this ethic board, I hope you do it right, the right way. Because there's just been too many things done in this city the wrong way for years and years and years. And hopefully, hopefully, this, like you said, this week may be a new turnaround for the city. It's got a long way to go. We're still distressed. You know, how many years now? I don't even know anymore. It's been so long. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight? How many years we've been distressed? I mean, come on now. There's a time, time for everything, you know? I mean, right now, we got the school board under investigation. We got the county jail under investigation. We got the county jail under investigation. We got the mayor under investigation. I mean, I don't know who else there's left to investigate, except for City Council. I hope they don't have no reason to investigate you guys. Otherwise, everybody will be investigated. County Commissioner's been investigated. As a matter of fact, we still have a county commissioner in jail. I mean, all this in one little city, Scranton, 70,000 people. You'd think we were a big city like Chicago or New York City, the way things go around here. But again, I hope, whatever this situation is, I hope it's resolved in a hurry and resolved quickly, so that the people and the citizens of Scranton can get on with their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council, Lee Morgan. You know, tonight, I'd just like to say that, you know, Mr. Jackowitz just got up and spoke about 70,000 people and his opinion probably of how corrupt this city is. And I don't think that the people here should be surprised. I think people in Chicago and New York are lightweights compared to the stuff that's been going on in this city of 70,000 people for a long, long, long time. And you have to look, when the council brings up ethics, it's almost comical. Because the voters should be the ones determining its city government and making sure that everything is run correctly and honestly. And they've really failed the public. The people that don't vote, the people who come in and they vote for the machine, the people who don't even know why they vote, the absentee ballots that somebody hands to somebody in a convalescent home who doesn't even know what day of the week it is, let alone that they're anywhere near Scranton. We've just built an empire here of waste of public funds. And we've taken a city into distress. And instead of cutting the budget and redirecting itself, it's just sold all its assets off, continued its silly little games, destroyed the public school system, and put everything in such a state of disrepair and distress. And it's beyond distress, really, it's bankruptcy. And just, you know, like I said last week, the 2.4% wage tax needs to go away. The 1% that goes to the school district, it needs to go away. I think the school district needs to be reorganized. And I think that the vast majority of students in the Scranton School District need to be educated in cyber school. And the ones that can't be educated there, they need to keep a couple of brick-and-mortar schools standing to make sure that those people receive a quality education. Because the people we've elected to the school board over decades have done nothing, and I mean absolutely nothing, to enhance the educational process in the city of Scranton. And when you take a look at construction projects and just straight-up pork barrel, we've got a treehouse at Naught Park that had no superstructure, but it was tied to a tree. It's getting ready to go over, cost a million bucks. We got a bridge right down the lane from that. You could drive a tractor-trailer across. I think it's named after a politician. But when you get across the bridge, there's no road on the other side. We've got citizens in the city of Scranton who've asked the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County for relief from the overburden of taxation imposed on it by the city of Scranton, and it's tied up there. We had a lady come here today talking about her handicap placard for in front of her house. That lady belongs in front of a judge in Lackawanna County. Pennsylvania pro bono, or some attorney should take that case up and go into court and bring that officer in. And the judge should ask him a couple of questions. And then we'd see how fast that placard would be back up. Because, you know, my instance of the times that I've had problem with the city of Scranton, their laws are just in conflict with law and reality. So when we talk about making an ethics commission, the people in this city need to wake up and grow up. They need to come to the polls. They need to dump the political hacks in the machine. But, you know, maybe the mentality goes back to Ireland in this community from the turn of the last century, when the shanty Irish and the lace curtain Irish came here. And the shanty Irish never even picked their eyes up off the ground. And the lace curtain Irish that were running everything, they never left them pick their head up off the ground. A lot of them died in the mines. Don't forget that during the Civil War, most of the people, I believe, who died in that war were Irish. I mean, it's just, it's pathetic. No recording of the public record. No information for the residents of the city to question, they ask. No audits, nothing, absolutely nothing. Just shiny, pretty suits and nothing else. Think about that tonight.
Thank you. Gledis Johns?
Good evening, City Council and city of Scranton. My name is Gledis Johns. We have a lot of stuff going on. However, I wanted to introduce the city to an event that's happening next month for Black History Month. So as we're all aware, as Mr. Lee Morgan just mentioned, history is an integral part of this city. And as we celebrate Black History Month and its pivotal role to the black community here, this exhibition that I'm about to tell you about focuses on the key Black Scrantonians in northeastern Pennsylvania who define the meaning of democracy, equity, and justice. So the exhibition that the Black Scranton Project is putting on is called "Remembering and Understanding the Heritage of Black Scrantonians." And it will open on Friday, February 1st, at 5:00 at the marketplace at Steamtown on the second floor, near the wine cellar. This exhibition is drawn from local collections and extensive research. And it showcases the acquisitions of local artists of color, as well as research and documents and objects that we would love to share with the community about the integrity of the black community that was here. So it offers an opportunity to see Scranton through a different lens, a black perspective. So I just have a flyer here that I'll give to you guys for this Black History Month exhibition. Again, it'll be all month. It's kind of like a gallery exhibition, so think of like a museum sort of feel, where you can go in and you can see bits of history that the Black Scranton Project has collected over the course of two years. And so for those who don't know about the Black Scranton Project, the Black Scranton Project is a special collections archive dedicated to cultural empowerment and preserving preservation of the rich black and African-American heritage here, specific to the city of Scranton. In addition to the archival work, the Black Scranton Project has focused on showcasing the hidden histories and contribution of the black community in the city. Our mission is to seek out and spotlight local talents and offer a platform for conversation to give voice and agency to marginalize and underrepresented groups in Scranton. The Black Scranton Project strives to promote multicultural education and create spaces to educate, inspire, and stimulate dialogue, but above all, to give recognition and insight to centuries of discounted contributions put forth by black residents. And so, again, Black History Month is important to the nation and our community. And I think a lot of times, we overlook what the local contributions are. With everything going on here, I think it kind of will give insight into the ways that we approach history, to approach legislation, to approach communities. For more information, you can visit blackscranton.com. We also have a Facebook page and event. You could go to Facebook slash Blackscranton, as well as Instagram at Blackscranton on all social media. So I will give you guys this flyer. Definitely check it out. It opens 5 to 8 on Friday at the marketplace, but it'll be open Monday through Sunday, 12 to 7, as long as the mall's open, so you can just come in, check it out. And we're also looking for volunteers, but you can inquire about that on our website as well. So thank you, and also happy Black History Month and happy New Year.
Are there any other speakers that would like to address City Council?
Dave Ferrantis, Scranton. Couple of things I'm gonna say are hypothetical, so just so you understand that right off the bat. I'd like to know, have any of you councilmen up there spoken with the mayor since this has taken place at all? None of you have?
No, I have not.
No, I have not. Mr. Rogan mentioned that this morning.
Right, but he said himself, he didn't mention the other ones. Okay, thank you. What my view of this is this. Because the mayor is under investigation, I think he should step aside until this is resolved. And the deputy mayor, I guess, would take over until it's resolved. Because if he is doing something wrong, what's to stop him from continuing to do it? Covering stuff up or whatever? I mean, I don't think it's asking too much for him to step aside until this is taken care of, considering the circumstances with the FBI. And I think you should also put that in the ethics, the new ethics code. If there's an investigation of a city official, they should be asked to step aside until it's resolved. Now, would the deputy mayor be the one that would take over? Or would the president of the city council be the one? In case of the situation where someone would step aside, not resign, step aside? Who would be in charge, the deputy mayor or the president of the city council?
I'm not sure. So I guess it would be something like if someone did step aside or went on like a leave of absence type of thing. I would have to look into it to find out if it would be just like the deputy mayor.
I would imagine the mayor would be allowed to appoint somebody in his...
Do you know the law on this, or are you just guessing?
You ask a question, I'm giving my opinion.
Does Mr. Menora know who would legally take over if the mayor stepped aside?
I think the deputy mayor would take over, you know, if the mayor is temporarily unable to perform his duties.
If he were to step aside?
That could be from a health issue, as well as something else. So I believe that's the correct way, but I'd wanna go back and look at the charter and the administrative code to be sure.
Thank you. The Home Rule Charter states that the president of the city council, like if there was a vacancy, if the mayor weren't here anymore, if he resigned or whatever, the president of the city council would take over for 30 days, and then they would appoint someone. Is that the Pennsylvania Constitution, or is that the city Home Rule Charter? Would the Pennsylvania Constitution supersede that and say there should be a special election? Or would the president of the city council, after 30 days, appoint someone? Which would it be? A special election or someone appointed after 30 days? Does anybody know?
We're reviewing that now.
For me?
We are reviewing that now.
But you don't have any ideas?
Sure, we do. Well, we know what the code says, we know what the Home Rule Charter says, which means that the president of the council will serve up to 30 days. And within that timeframe, city council will appoint the interim mayor.
But do you know if the Pennsylvania Constitution says there must be a special election or not versus that?
And that's what we're trying to find out right now, what supersedes what, exactly.
Because don't you think you should be prepared? I mean, something could happen next week.
We are being prepared, we are doing that right now.
But you don't have the answer to that question, though?
Not tonight, no, we don't. We just talked about it in our caucus earlier this evening.
Well, would you have that answer for me in two weeks?
We should.
Another thing, as far as this ethics, like I said earlier, this ethics code. If you're gonna have any codes and any laws, I hope that you follow them, because you haven't followed many laws in the city at all. You hear about them, you ignore them, you don't address them, you don't answer questions about them. Other than Bill Gunn and Mr. Donahue, I mean, the public doesn't know anything. Every time we ask Mr. Evans or at Rogan a question, we don't know. We just don't know. We'll check into it, but you never, ever, I've been asking Mr. Evans four years for questions on the garbage fee, I haven't gotten an answer yet. And he's the finance chair. Now hypothetically, here's an ethics code, here's just one of the ethics codes. So this is, if someone were to violate this ethics code, here's an example. Solicit or accept gratuities, favors, or anything of monetary value from contractors, potential contractors, or any parties to subdegrees, sub-agreements, and subcontractors. Now, that's an example of ethics code violation, if that were to happen. Person could be removed. Okay, I also asked this. Who would remove the mayor? Any mayor, I don't mean Mr. Corray. Who would remove the mayor? You said you don't. Would it be the Ethics Commission, or would it be, who would it be in the city government? Who would have the power to remove the mayor?
We'd have to look into that a little bit further.
Okay, then...
Again, that's not something that's ever been looked into.
I know that, but that's something that you should be prepared to do. That could happen in a week from now, and you're not even prepared to do it. So I think you should get those answers to those questions long before two weeks from now. And if you don't have those answers in two weeks, you have a lot of answers to question to the people. Because we have a right to know those answers. Because right now, our government could be shut down in two days, and you don't know who's gonna take over.
Well, the government is not gonna shut down in the city.
No, but who's gonna run it? You don't know that, and you don't know, and you don't know what to do next. You don't know what the law is, whether it's gonna be a special election, or you appoint someone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Mr. Menora was kind enough to follow up on that social gain or benefit. But now I'm even more confused, because it comes, AA is private gain of personal benefit, whether economic, social, or otherwise. I don't know what a social personal benefit is, so I think you should either take that out or make it clear. The other thing with respect to it that I wanted to talk about is, one of the sections talks about misuse of municipal property. And I don't know how you would, how the average person would even know that, because we don't know who's entitled to do what with what on their job. So I don't know. I think maybe that needs a little bit of finessing as well. Back to last week, do we have anything on the policy for how, for the homeless or for the drug, and I'm not even gonna try to pronounce that antidote, because I...
Well, no, we did get in touch with Chief Graziano, and he's going to be coming in to address us. I don't have the date in front of me, but it'll be within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and both of those items?
Yes.
Okay. And the Home Rule Charter revision, or when can we expect to see that on the agenda?
Well, we can certainly have a conversation about it. I have to see what my colleagues feel about it. I've told you before that I'm in favor of a review. I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but we'll have that discussion for sure.
How long?
I'll talk to them in our next available opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Now, The Times had an article in very recently on a second chance program, again, relating to drugs. Would that, if the police want to accept that program, do they have to come through this body to have that voted on? Or is that arbitrary? They can make the decision on whether or not they wanna do that? Or it's a good thing to do with our tax dollars?
Well, as I remember, wasn't, didn't we have legislation from that last year about accepting a grant? And it had all the information on the second chance project. And I guess it's now starting to be implemented. But as far as how it's gonna be implemented, I don't think this body will have any...
Could you tell me possibly, I mean, not right now, but could you let me know what, when that was? That grant was?
Yeah, I can go back and look and through my notes and see if I can find it.
Did we get that grant?
I'm guessing we did, but I can find out for sure.
Okay. Moving on, Arcadia. It's more than being forever late. But what it is, is that we have so many rain, stormwater problems in this city. And the only way they're gonna get fixed is if we move out. The longer we put it out, we've gotta, I mean, you can't expect the DPW to do everything that the sewer authority did. And it's been how many years now, two, maybe more? So when are we gonna get these problems fixed and how without getting this document? I mean, how much longer can that go on?
Joan, I do have a response from them, but I didn't bring it with me tonight. But I'll make sure that you have...
You do have a date?
Oh, I have a response of when they're gonna be, when they feel they're gonna be completed. So I'll pass it on to you as well.
Do you, okay, you've read it. Is it days, months, weeks?
I think it's probably within the next two months, is my understanding. But I'll verify that, and I'll send you a copy of that response.
Well, yeah, I certainly hope so. Okay, and you will do something to tell people what is a misuse of public property? Who is entitled to do what with public property? And will that become part of this ethics thing? Or will it be something separate?
I have to go back and look, but that...
I have to go back and look, but that may be included in one of the definitions, what the definition of misuse is. And I think that is delineated someplace in that document.
Well, yeah, it is, but that's what I'm saying. They're asking that to be reported, but who knows? Who knows who's entitled to do what with what?
Well, that might be subject to the board. Like, someone would have to complain to the Board of Ethics about possible misuse of city properties. So I think your question is what, how would you know what misuse would be?
Yeah, how could you, yeah, if you, yeah. Okay, my five minutes are up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. If we could, we talked about this at the beginning of the meeting with sending out correspondence to the FBI. If my colleagues agree, Attorney Menora, are we able to include with that some kind of asking them for a timeframe to release at least the scope of the investigation or what the nature of the investigation? I know they're going to be very tight lipped, but if we could just have like a timeframe on when they think they'll be releasing information to the public.
Yeah, I'm sure we can include that in a letter.
Okay, and then, at least then, we'll kind of have an idea of when we should be able to expect something.
Will do.
So needless to say, I was stunned by the news that came out this week's investigation. You know, I don't plan on, you know, feeding into any rumors or speculations or assumptions that are making the circuit right now. I found out about the investigation by a phone call from the Scranton Times during the week, and that's how I was alerted. And I was also alerted that the mayor did not resign via the Scranton Times website. So I'm looking for information, just like everyone else at this point. No, I haven't spoken to the mayor this week. It's, I don't speak with him every week anyway, so it's really nothing out of the norm. But, you know, I'll be waiting for the FBI to conclude their work before I make any further comments on this, because it's really, you know, it's just kind of wordplay. Right now, I don't have any information to give, unfortunately. But I think, you know, I at least owed to go on the record to say that I didn't have any information. That's why I gave Jim a call back with the Scranton Times, just to let him know that I did get his call, and unfortunately, I don't have any information. But I'll be waiting and trying to get it as everyone else will be. Getting to some business, the handicap parking permit, I'll be working on that. I'll probably start that tonight. I'll make a phone call, and we'll see how fast we can get that fixed for you. Okay? So, and you left your phone number, so I'll keep you in the loop, step by step, on the process. You're welcome. You're very welcome. I'll also be looking into that second chance grant. I'll try to find the date and the amount and when it went through. I really wish I could remember, but I can't remember the amount or the date that we had that in front of us. Also, on the agenda tonight is item 5C, so we have some information from the chief on that, so I figure I'll just, I'll fill everybody in, what he responded back with. Terry is an acronym used for a terminal illness as defined by the Social Security Administration. The Terry assignment could be anywhere from an approved light duty position with the police department to being placed on leave while being treated for a terminal illness. The duration is covered by the MOU, and the assignment would depend upon the employee's current physical capabilities that would be determined by a physician, based on a specific terminal illness. The MOU stems from having two officers recently battling serious illnesses, and there, you know, really wasn't a place. This kind of helps them stay in like a light duty capacity, to help them keep working if they're physically able to, if they need to. Because, you know, a lot of times, that's some of the best medicine, is just continue on your daily life and keeping, keeping things as normal as possible. So this is going to help them continue that if that's the path they wish. And that is, that's going to be all I have today. Mr. Rogan.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick resident items first. Mrs. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to PennDOT requesting a meeting at their earliest convenience to discuss the intersection of Pittston Avenue and Orchard Street? And also, would you be able to send a letter to the city solicitor to ask her a breakdown on the scope of the work being done on the emergency repair of the Meadowbrook conduit? I just had some neighbors who are not involved in the settlement who have approached me with questions about exactly what is being done. Now on to the big news of the week. I'm not going to speculate or comment on any rumors that may have circulated over the past few days, because rumors are not fact. Obviously, an investigation is ongoing, and I am positive as soon as that investigation is concluded, any information will be released as soon as it is appropriate to do so. In saying that, I would only urge the mayor that if he did nothing wrong, he should make a statement to that effect and continue to come to work every day to do the work the residents of this city elected him to do. If he did do something wrong, especially with everything going on at the school district and in the county, I strongly urge him to do whatever is necessary to spare the residents of this city from the dark cloud of corruption that would inevitably hang over all of us. I would also like to assure the residents of this city that I firmly believe a majority of this council is capable of setting the ethical bar extremely high moving forward. Proof of this is the updated ethics code that was introduced last week and which is on our agenda tonight, which originated in and was drafted by this council. I'm extremely proud to have worked on this updated code along with Councilman Gahn, as well as my other colleagues, over the last few months. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
I do, thank you. Well, the events of the past week can best be described as shocking. It is something that none of us could have ever expected, and we could only hope for the best and plan for the worst. In the meantime, we should do our very best not to be part of the unfounded rumor mill, and we need not to participate in the endless games of speculation. And I hope no one here takes pleasure for one second in the pain and anguish of others. We're better than that. But with that said, sometime soon, we would all like to hear from the mayor. This investigation will take the course that it takes, and there's very little that we can do about it. Or should we? We can only hope at the end of the day that truth ultimately prevails and justice is rightfully served. Our role is not to interject ourselves. Needlessly, our role is to make sure transparency is achieved and trust is restored. But for now, our primary focus needs to be to continue to lead where we can, to step up even more, to make sure that this city moves forward in a positive way by controlling those things that we can actually control. And beyond that, we should help wherever we can in any way that we can. Last week, as you know, I laid out an agenda for 2019, while ambitious I felt then as I do now, that we can affect positive change and make those things happen. This year, I still feel that way. Somehow, my commitment to this city is even greater today than it was even a week ago, simply because it has to be. We are all entering uncharted territory. If we allow the events of the past week to paralyze our decision-making process, if we allow the events of the past week to stymie our efforts to achieve progress and a positive agenda, if we allow the events of the past week to define us as a city now and the future, then we have failed as citizens and we have failed as leaders. So now more than ever, we need to all come together as a city council, as a community, and as a city. And that's all I have on that subject.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. As my colleague said, it was, you know, really shocking, all of the news that has come out in the last few days, last week, that the FBI had raided Scranton City Hall and as well the mayor's home. It's clear to me that, you know, not only these events, but the events over the last few years in the city, the school district, and the county, that the faith that people have in their government officials has eroded to the point that it's just become disgraceful. And quite frankly, it has been a sad few days for the city of Scranton as a whole, in my opinion. I would encourage the mayor, his cabinet, and any other government officials to fully cooperate with the FBI and Justice Department in their investigation. At this time, I do not know any specific details about this, the investigation, other than it is ongoing. As details become available to council regarding this investigation, I would assume that we would all disclose them to the public and to the press as well. I understand, in listening to citizens here tonight and those who have contacted me over the last few days, that you are upset and you want answers. All of us want answers on what exactly is going on. As my colleagues had correctly pointed out, I don't think it's appropriate to guess on what may have happened or what may not have happened, what may have taken place, what may not have taken place. We need to let the investigation into these matters run its course. Allow the authorities to do their job so that all of the facts can be made available. The past few days have only highlighted for me the need for a stronger ethics code in the city, and most importantly, public officials who ask tough questions and demand integrity and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. I did address what's been going on at the top of the meeting. I'll just reiterate basically what my colleagues mentioned. I think we're all in agreement, we're all on the same page, that I know people are coming to us looking for answers, because every Monday night, city council is the face of city government. That we come here, we listen to the public, we're in front of the cameras. And we're going to continue to do that, and as we learn any more information, it'll be passed along to the public. I agree, and I think all my colleagues mentioned this, that none of us are going to comment on rumor or speculation, and we'll see what happens as this investigation pans out. But most importantly, to the residents of Scranton, and there had been some questions about what ifs during the presentations tonight, city services are not going to be affected. Your police are still going to be working, your firemen will still be working, DPW. So most importantly, to the residents of Scranton, the city is going to continue to operate, whether it's under the current mayor, if there is something that happens. But again, people tend to jump to conclusions, let's wait and see what happens. But rest assured, no matter what happens, the residents of Scranton are going to continue to have the same level of service that they've had over the last number of decades. I do want to end this meeting, this portion of the meeting, on a very positive note. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend last week's meeting. Over the Christmas holiday, my company had a Christmas dinner at the New AV on Penn Avenue. And I tend not to tell personal stories, but this one is a nice story that I wanted to share. As you know, the city of Scranton had helped out the AV restaurant move from Music to Scranton to relocate. On my travels heading to the restaurant on Penn Avenue, I had to drive around the block four times to get a parking spot. The first two times, I was a little bit frustrated, looking for that spot. By the last time, I thought, you know what? This is a good thing, because this block has been revitalized so much that you cannot find a spot. So I want to give a big thank you to all of those developers who made that block really come back to life. And I hate to admit it, I hadn't been on that block for quite a bit of time prior to this Christmas party. But I really encourage everyone just to take a stroll down Penn Avenue and see the beautiful buildings and many of the changes that have taken place in that area. That is all.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the fire chief of the city of Scranton Fire Department to execute and enter into a fire and rescue service agreement between the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission and the Scranton Fire Department to execute a contract for fire and rescue services.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton and Lodge Number Two of the Fraternal Order of Police whereby the police chief, in his discretion, may offer Terry assignments to officers who have been diagnosed or suffer from a terminal health condition.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Commonwealth Energy Group LLC for the city of Scranton Consulting Services for energy-saving performance from October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2021.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. In reviewing this legislation, the, one of the, part of the backup material is attachment D, disclosures by firm or contractor. When we voted months and months ago on the labor contract between the city of Scranton and Abrahamsen Conneboy and Abrahamsen, I had brought up issues with attachment D, that it was not filled out properly by the firm. So when I was looking at this piece of legislation, it looks to me that attachment D has been altered. It's been changed. It doesn't, I think we went from being very transparent with it and requiring more information to now kind of backing off of that a little bit. And I could be wrong, but that's, that's the way that I'm looking at it. So I would like something in writing from the administration on why exactly that change was made to attachment D. Maybe there is a reason for it. This company did answer the questions on attachment D about the contributors, whoever in the city contributed from this firm. But again, it looks to me like attachment D has been changed, and we're going backwards instead of staying where we were when this attachment was originally in previous legislation. So I hope I explained that the right way. But Mrs. Reed, if we could send a letter to the administration before final passage on this legislation, asking them why that, why that took place? Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A reading by title filed to council number 51, 2019, and ordinance amending the Code of Ethics of the Administrative Code of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Late today, council received a letter from the Fraternal Order of Police, German Lodge Number Two, making several objections to the ethics code. I have not had a chance to go through every single objection or the letter in full. So we discussed it briefly in the caucus, but I would like Attorney Menora to dig into this and take a look at what they're objecting to. And then, just on a secondary note, with some of the comments tonight in the public hearing and at the regular council meeting, you know, this, this all started, really, when I looked at our ethics code previously, over the whole coffee shop incident. And previous to that, I had sent correspondence to the mayor, asking him why the members of the ethics board had not been reappointed. The terms had expired. So I had questioned that, and I never received a response. And I could not find out when that board met, if it had ever met in the last few years, if anything was ever published in the newspaper regarding the rules, because there were rules and regulations, if someone in City Hall, a whistleblower, had a complaint about something that happened, how they would do that. So I think this ethics code takes care of that issue at least. The coincidence with all of this, obviously, is that, and it's been reported in the newspaper, that this ethics code comes at, comes at a time when the FBI investigation is going on. Purely a coincidence, but it is unbelievable, to say the least. Several residents tonight questioned, you know, if you have rules and regulations, who's going to enforce them? This board is going to enforce them. Not this council, but the Board of Ethics. So whoever we put our trust in, council gets two appointments, the mayor gets two appointments, and the controller gets one appointment. So whoever we appoint to the board, once it's up and running, they will then have to take the mantle and enforce all of the rules and regulations within the code. So I hope I answered that question satisfactorily. There are a number of procedures in this code. It's very clear, if somebody makes a complaint, the steps that the board has to take then to rectify that complaint. So I hope I answered questions there. If there are any more questions, my email's on the city website. Please let me know, and I'll try to answer them as best as I can. And again, we did receive a letter from the police, making several objections to the code and concerns that they had, so I'll have to take a look at that and have our solicitor respond. Thank you.
So as a follow-up, as Councilman Gahn mentioned, we did receive this letter. I did speak with the president of the FOP. It does seem like many of these items are more language in nature, having to do with collective bargaining. collective bargaining agreements, making sure things are consistent. So I'm very confident that these items could be worked out, so this legislation could pass without violating any of the collective bargaining agreements, but also still have all those items in this law that were intended. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
There's no further business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.